I would like to call the Tuesday, September 22th Board of Ed Meeting to order. And we'd like to open up with public audience. So I didn't know if there was anybody present who would like to speak. Seeing none, I know we do have some people who sent in a letter. And so Jen, as our secretary, is going to read the letter for us.
Okay. The letter is dated September 15th, 2020. Dear Superintendent Curtis, please extend the hybrid model through October or longer. The Simsbury School System has done a great job with this model. The small class cohorts maximize both classroom safety and effective learning. The smaller in-person sessions seem very effective, and the distance learning days incorporate synchronous instruction while encouraging independent activity. While we recognize the importance of getting students back to school in person, especially kindergarteners through second grade, the hybrid model is working well. Please allow more time to assess the efficacy of the safety measures you have put in place. Situations like those at Squadron Line and more than 60 other schools across the state, as outlined here, and presumably there is a link, emphasize the need for continued caution. We also recognize that supporting the hybrid model is not easy. Many of the undersigned families include two working parents or single parents who have to juggle multiple responsibilities. Several of us have taken a leave of absence or have altered our working situations in order to support this model. For families for whom that is not an option, perhaps the district could extend CED to support hybrid learning days. Or perhaps families with hardships or requiring extra resources could apply to have children attend full-time in person. Right now, we need to do not what is easy, but what is right for our children and teachers. By extending the hybrid option now, we can hopefully avoid having to all move to full-time distance learning. The hybrid model balances risk mitigation with the educational advantage of being in person. Please extend it through at least October. Thank you. Now, I will read the names. And again, I am terrible at pronouncing names, so I apologize in advance for any that I get wrong. It's Rebecca and Melanie Bowers, Amy and Andrew Corner, John Wood and Jeff Gall, Jennifer and Matthew Witt, Sally Catlett, Sarah Patterson and Dominic Baer, Anne Marie Matit, Holly McGrath, Heather and Dave Persalt, Stacy Mancarella, Megan and Sam Taggart, Linda Legas, Sam and Stephanie Macio, Jen Sanford and Matthew Birch, Cara Pompa, Pamela Federakirkeen, Lori and John Brandon, Lisa Cooperman, Maureen Murphy-Bimonte, Kim Levesque, Susan and Eric Agasson, Kimberly Kiernan, Jennifer and Benjamin Kirk, Crystal Gonzalez and Carlos Gonzalez-Mora, Ahmet and Sean Fekney, Brandy and Tim Joyce, Jeremy and Sarah Tucker, Erica and Kenneth Richard, Lexi and Jim Costanzo, Cassandra and Sean Taylor, Lori Stethers, Heidi and Stephen Schrum, Alex and Shay Rakers, Carrie and Paul Ricadelli, Sherry Shankman, Gail Murphy, Jessica Sherman and Neil Cork, Catherine and Richard Cardinal, Rachel and Chris Farrell, Shannon and Mark Knoll, Matthew and Joanna Beernert, Jessica Van Dyke, Maggie and Ryan Shapiro, Bryn Brown, Michael and Leah Latour, Cara and Stephen Sutton, and Eliah Gonzalez.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for signing in the public comments. We appreciate the input always. Is there any other public comment?
Yeah. So I just, for public audience sake, Michael Hunter, 14 Fawnbrook Lane. And I work here at the school, and I am a parent of three students in the district, one at the high school, one at the middle school, and one at Tooton Hills. I just want to counter that and make a point that whereas I applaud the district, and I think they've done a really fantastic job in a really bad situation, making this work and making the hybrid situation work, but the education level is really suffering. And it has nothing to do with the dedication of our staff and the teachers, but more to the fact that, first of all, the homework level is nowhere near what it has been. And there's almost, there's very little accountability. And that's not necessarily the fault of the students, and it's definitely not the fault of the teachers. But because this is something that is new and something that we're exploring and changing every single day, I have students at home who, I've got a high school student that logs on sometimes, and I have happened to see and talk to a lot of teachers here at the high school who have students that it's turned into almost, it's almost laughable how many students seem to have Internet connectivity problems. And I happen to know, because I do know so many high school students, that a lot of those kids have decided that they've just slept through a class and not logged on. And for the poor teacher who's put together a lesson plan and has sat there and tried to teach these kids, it's, the teacher has no course of action when it comes to a student saying, "Oh, yeah, we had problems with our Wi-Fi." What, I mean, what, how can the teacher counter that? They can't. But I do happen to see that the education level in Simsbury right now, which we're trying to maintain, and I appreciate on so many levels, not just because I work here, but as a parent, but it is suffering. There's no question about that. And so where I feel like the district has done an awesome job responsibly addressing all of the problems and making sure that the kids are safe and making sure that the parents are safe and that the staff is doing everything that they can to keep the kids, the teachers, the administration, everybody's safe, I just think that it would be unwise for us to try to take any steps backward. Because, especially considering the fact that I think our district is doing a really good job, I think we have to start looking forward to what the next, the next phase of the plan looks like and try to get back to a position where we're really offering a top-notch education. And it's not that we aren't trying to do that every day, but I do feel that there is a possibility that we are not reaching those kids in the best way. So I just ask the board to think about that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate that. All right. With that, we are on to Board and Administrative Communications.
Hi. We had a great curriculum meeting last week, and it was, Erin ran a great, was very helpful and brought a lot of great information to us. We are looking, obviously, at textbooks always in continuous improvement, and we have brought in a new one for English, which is Trevor Noah's biography and Born a Crime. And we have also talked about an anthology that is going to be international writers and a compilation of a world vision, which is very exciting. We also were able to meet Liz McKay, who is the new Capstone Coordinator, which I know that it's a new thing that's coming, and it's a mandate for graduation requirement. And we are working at organizing how it's going to look and how to make it work for all the students. And Liz McKay is our coordinator, and it's very exciting to meet her. And she will be at our, the second October meeting for the Board of Ed to tell everyone at the board level and anyone in the public what she's doing and what her, what our expectations are and what our kids are going to need to know.
Great.
It sounds great. It's very, very, very exciting.
Yeah, thank you. Nothing. Jen?
I just wanted to jump on to what Tara said. It's just that that Capstone project stuff, it's class of 23 and later, not 21 and 22. Any parents are stressing out right now. That is it.
Excellent point. Excellent, excellent point.
Not this year. We have a little bit, this is a building.
Right. But it's nice that we're already talking about it, so it won't be so scary when it comes.
Awesome.
Good point.
Just briefly, I had mentioned with NSBA, we are doing virtual conferences now that normally would be in person. And last week, we had a very successful school safety summit over the course of two days with at least 1,000 participants from around the country. Now, today, tomorrow, and Thursday, we are having the annual Council of Urban Boards of Education Conference, and we have about 1,000 participants. And yours truly was able to present on behalf of National School Board's Action Center, which is the real grassroots piece of National School Board, because we still are continuing the advocacy, you know, fight on the Hill with a lot of the legislation that will be coming forward. But some of the, some of the topics I talked about were school nutrition, learning crises and response, equity and inclusion. And we had a great topic today was a conversation with Google Computer Science. So they were able to also come in from California. So it was really the first time I had experienced, we were able to talk with Google staff about equity in computer science. And then, of course, workforce impact during COVID and what have you. So if any of you are interested in any of these fantastic presentations from around the country, let me know, and I'll try to get you in contact with them. But they were, we've got two more days, and this is a real trial to do this at such a magnitude virtually, but so far, so good. So it looks like we'll be continuing these, these types of conferences and what have you for the future, the way we're going.
Great. Thank you.
Nothing. Thanks.
Sharon?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Ryan?
I'm all set right now.
Thank you. All right. So then we are on to recommended actions. So we have the approval of the minutes of the September 8th meeting, and I get a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 8th meeting.
A second?
A second.
All right. Any discussion?
Sue, we can't hear you down here.
You can't hear me? Wait. Is that better? Does that help? Okay. Is there any discussion on the minutes from September 8th? All those in favor?
Aye.
On to personnel. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, just one item for tonight. Unfortunately, we've had a little run on these in the past year, which is talented Simsbury educators landing their first administrative job in other places. So Alden Peay has been a math coach with us at Central School. I just noticed, actually, that the exhibit is not correct, and she's been with us for two years. And recently, Alden successfully interviewed for an assistant principal's position in Torrington and landed that job, so we congratulate Alden. Currently, Alden was one of the teachers that had been reassigned and is currently teaching distance learning in third grade. So Betsy Gonzalez is interviewing for a distance learning third-grade replacement as we speak, and we're, we have some great leads on that front. So congratulations to Alden, and her resignation will be effective with us on October 8th.
So we still have Alden for a little bit longer?
Little bit longer.
Okay. Great. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Move that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Alden Peay effective October 8, 2020.
Second? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for your service. We appreciate it. So on to informational reports. Mr. Curtis?
Great.
Oh, I didn't go to administration during communications. I just, that just hit me. I'm sorry, everybody.
I'm all set.
I apologize.
I'll weave it into my, yep. You got it. I didn't have anything tonight either.
Mrs. Lamb, I'm sorry.
I'll weave it.
Okay. Sorry, everybody.
Not a problem.
It just hit me like a ton of bricks. I apologize.
All right. Thanks, Susan. So we will put up on the, on the screen, as we said, our guiding principles when we start each of these meetings and talk about our reopening strategies and the progress we're making, as well as the challenges that we're having in problem solving, too. So the two main things we wanted to talk about with the board this evening are, we want to provide a little bit more specific background to board members, those listening at home, about contact tracing and our collaboration with the Farmington Valley Health District relative to that process. I think that's important to, to talk about and get people to, to better understand. The second piece is Erin is going to talk through a little bit of what our secondary distance learning program looks like. So at our last board meeting, when we talked about our reopening, Betsy Gonzalez spent quite a bit of time talking about our elementary model, which is different from our secondary model. And we did get a little feedback and input, I did, and had some conversations with parents that thought, you know, you need to talk a little bit more about the secondary level model, let people know how it's different, talk about some of the changes we're making to improve on that model, and talk about some of the challenges we've had. Mr. Hunter talked about one, which has been some technological challenges. So Erin will share some of that information tonight and talk about our plans moving forward. So those are the, kind of the two main things we're going to go through tonight. I do want to put the data up. We talked about sharing that main, we call it the leading indicator, that school administrators work with their health districts in making determining decisions relative to bringing kids back to school, moving to different models. So this leading indicator is the cases per 100,000. We've shared it a couple times now. You can see the Farmington Valley Health District ticked up from 1.4 to 2.4 cases per 100,000. To put that in perspective a little bit, that's 18 cases amongst the 10 towns in Farmington Valley, which is about 110,000 people, right now? Correct. And two of those were school-age children. The new data actually came out this week. Sue had a meeting this morning with Jen Kurtanis. We do a Zoom call every week. This is a lagging, this is lagging indicator data, so the new data for next week will be back down to about 1.4 cases per 100,000. So that's, that's a positive thing. And I guess the point I wanted to make with this, even with the uptick, it's well within the range, you know, the lower kind of quartile of the range of this model, which is below 10. So, you know, the one thing I was going to share, Susan, in communications, it was really nice to get out to the schools a little bit after that initial kind of planning rush of, of getting kids back in and the focus on the safety measures, get into some classrooms and observe what it looked like with our kindergarten through second-grade students in with full enrollment. And I do have to say, I mean, our administrative team, our principals, feel very comfortable with where we're at. You know, we have an average class size of just under 16. So those mitigation strategies that we framed out early on in our planning process, I believe are working well, and I think we, we are poised to move forward. And we do plan, Neil's going to talk about the transition plan here in a minute, but we plan to move forward with grades three through six on the 29th, as we had talked about. I believe that's supported by the data. And Neil is also going to share a little bit of information about some initial planning that we've had at the secondary level as well. So just wanted to get this data out in front of people. I think it's important that we continue at each board meeting to put it out front and speak to it in terms of how we make our decisions.
Definitely. Thank you.
So this is, once again, we've used this in each of our last three board meetings to remind you about where we are in our transition plan. And similar to some comments I made a few weeks ago, I want to emphasize just how well this staggered approach into full return has worked. The soft opening, as I called it, to start with the half-days and then get folks in in the hybrid model, comfortable with smaller classes and learning, our safety measures paid huge dividends. And it was a great celebration on September 14th, when we brought our youngest students back, grades K through two. I will also note that our preschool is open and operating at its capacity right now at Squadron Line School. So that happened on Monday, September 14th, and those students did a, a full week last week and started again yesterday. And all of the feedback about being able to concentrate on the students in front of you, not live in the hybrid world, has been tremendous from our primary teachers. That then led to the three-through-six teachers talking through, talking to their K, to two colleagues and saying, "We can't wait for September 29th, because we'd like to have our students in here fully." And that is definitely the plan, that next Tuesday, after our long weekend coming up, that our Simsbury Elementary Schools will be fully open. It will also, at that point, be, we're ready in terms of the other procedures in the school, in terms of large-scale recess and lunch and drop-off, and all of that has really, this first month is working out the kinks as you learn new procedures, and we're very, very confident with the full return next Tuesday, the 29th. It's also meant that we're starting the process, saying that it was the week of September 29th that we would start to announce our plans for what would happen at the secondary level. We have had separate meetings with the Henry James Administration, had an excellent meeting, preliminary planning meeting with Scott Baker and Angelique Belmonte last week, looking at Henry James. They, I will note a few things for them. They've made an excellent use of outside space at Henry James. They've also been very, very thoughtful about how they've done lunch, and different teams go to different areas. They very much were about keeping the cohorts of the teams separate. And what Scott and Angelique walked us through with their schedule and their plans is their look at how they could potentially return students. For our earliest targeted date was after Columbus Day, Tuesday, October 13th. And right now, we're confident that the plans look like we can do that at the middle school. I will note that subtracting the distance learners, where there are just about 100 at Henry James, that would leave a population of 530 students at Henry James. And actually, if you add up what we have at Squadron Line with the K6 students at Squadron Line plus the preschool, we've actually already, will have opened a school that size by, by next Monday. So, you know, it is a, it is a manageable look at, at what we're doing at Henry James and assuming the health indicators stay where they are and that there are no significant changes, that that is the plan. I would say that there are just inherently more challenges at nine through 12, and that has been the case since the commissioner first announced plans. If the board remembers that the direction for, the governor and the commissioner put out in late June when they said, "We want to return to school," they said, "The, the goal is to return as many students to in-person school as possible," with an emphasis on K8. Everybody understood that 912 was going to be a greater challenge, and having to do both with the scheduling of high school students and just the size of the facility. If you subtract out distance learners at Simsbury High School, it would be 1,100 students here per day. And that's a significantly larger number and significantly greater logistical challenges. There are things, we met with the high school administration twice, things that definitely need to be looked at. They need to, they have talked about doing some tweaks to their lunchtime procedures. That's a difficult part of the day for them right now, and they want to try to perfect it, if you will, or at least make some strides to add some lunch waves, which they have some ideas around that. The scheduler for Simsbury High School, Cam Perre, needs to look at some moving of classrooms of some of our larger cohorts to make sure that we can move classes, that there are some classes with still more than 20 students, and they would need to be moved to larger spaces in order to safely socially distance those students. So while we are hopeful that the October 13th date could, could be met, we're not as confident as we are with Henry James. And it may, it may take a little bit more experience and planning as we look at the high school level. I will tell you that Mr. Petrina had a 3:00 call today with the principals of the other large high schools in the area. So he was meeting virtually with the principals of Farmington, Avon, Conard Hall, and us on a, on a conference call to talk about what their plans are, what their timelines are. And I have not touched base with him since he had that call, but I will be interested to talk with him in the morning about what those other schools are doing. We know that the only high schools that, that have kind of made the plan to open fully are the smaller high schools in the area right now. So I'll show you a little bit of data on the next slide about that. Again, Avon has announced October 13th as its planned date for secondary. And you'll see on here that the only school that has opened at this, the only district that has opened at the secondary level is Granby, with their middle school and high school are on the same campus in separate buildings. But again, it's the, it's the size issue that their high school is almost exactly the same size as our middle school. So that's really kind of a logistical advantage that a smaller high school has at this point in time. So again, great reports about what we've done at the elementary school, great confidence of where we're headed at the middle school, and I think some really good planning that the high school team is doing to meet its goal, which remains to bring all students back in person as soon as we possibly can. So I'll pause there if there's any questions about that part.
So for middle school families, they'll look for communication from Umat or Scott?
We will, the communication will probably come from the building level.
Okay.
We're, we're talking about that with Scott tomorrow, actually.
Okay. Okay. So anyone who has?
Elementary principals will send out this Friday or later on this week
About what?
The reminder about 36 coming back, and then we'll plan out which way to do the communication. I mean, if it comes from me, it'll be kind of an intro to it, and then there'll be much more detail coming from the building level. So we're working through that now.
Parents of middle schools, day to end.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
Does the Heroes Program?
The Heroes Program, which is, you know, basically daycare and distance learning support for our elementary, children of employees at the elementary level, will end on Friday because the full K6 will be back in place. So it's been highly successful, and three more days of the Heroes Program, and we're going to be wrapping it up. So.
Okay. Anyone else?
Excuse us while we transition from talking about transition here.
Neil, the one, the one piece I wanted to add in is that when we had conversations with both the middle school and the high school, both thought it would be very advantageous to bring, to keep the Monday the way that the Monday is right now. And that's really tied to the distance learning students and the fact that the distance learning model at the secondary level is different, right? Those teachers own both those kids that sit in front of them, and they have to teach them to those kids at home. So if we could maintain that Monday where it was periods kind of one through eight, shortened periods, online, and then in the afternoon, we would have dedicated time where the teachers now could connect with the distance learners in small groups and in a different way to ensure that we're all on point. So it'd be the Monday, and, oh, I'm sorry, and the four full days in, is what we're talking about right now.
So four days in person at Henry James with Monday still online?
The same as it is now. Correct. And then we could reassess that and, as we get into it a little bit.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Yeah, that's a nice classification, clarification.
What I also wanted to share with the board, actually, in, in administrative communications is that
is that special education students have been prioritized for early return. So as we have been coming back online for that full five-day-a-week compilation, please know that we've also been prioritizing our students with specialized needs for that return, and that's been going very, very well.
Okay.
So this next section is really around contact tracing, and some have asked, when there is a positive case in Simsbury, what happens and what do we do? We really have been lockstep in with the Farmington Valley Health District, specifically their director, Jennifer Kurtanis, who has been assigned to the Simsbury Public Schools as a liaison. And a huge piece of what happens first is this concept of contact tracing. So I wanted to share some of those details with the board and then to talk about some potential scenarios, and they really are context and case-specific, but I think they're important to share. So when we have a positive case, we start collecting various data, and you can see by that slide some of the data that we collect. The name of the person who has, is presumed positive, when they may have been in our last, the date of our last attendance in our school community, either as a student or a staff member. We also collect information around symptom and symptom onset because that is very important, and specific information around who might be impacted in that class. Did the student take school transportation? What does that look like? What activities has that student or staff member been participating in? And that data, all compiled, is used to determine close contacts. And those close contacts are used to determine whether or not we may have to implement exclusions of people from our community so we can mitigate the spread of the virus. So this definition of close contact is an extremely important one, because when we say, "Okay, somebody may have been in close contact with me," there's a very specific determination that's used by the Farmington Valley Health District. So it's those who are within six feet of the person who is positive for COVID for greater than 15 minutes, up to 48 hours prior to symptom onset, or their date where they find out that they were positive. So there's a very specific definition to be used because there's a lot of different contexts. So if I'm walking by you in a grocery store, that would not be considered a close contact. If I'm walking by you in a hallway, that might not be considered close contact. Even if we share some of the same space, we might not be close contacts. So I wanted to explain this very specific definition and know that this is what's used when the Farmington Valley Health District is determining who we need to reach out to with any potential exclusions. Todd?
I don't want to, if you're getting to this, then just, but what's the logistics for collecting this data? I mean, are you going to ask, you know, kids at different ages are going to be able to provide this information with a different level of credibility?
Yes.
How do we do that? If you were going to get to that, then...
No, certainly I can, I can respond to that now. It depends upon the situation. It depends upon the age of the student. We might call upon parents. We might call upon staff members, administrators, other support staff that may be involved. It really is depending, and we also take a look at what are the mitigation factors that were in play, and to what degree have they been implemented with fidelity? I will certainly get to that a little bit more, but it really is case-dependent. Neil, I think you can go to the next slide. So this slide is quite robust, but what I wanted to show the board are potential scenarios that we might face and other public schools might face, and what do we take into consideration when making decisions about exclusions. There have been specific addendums that the state has shared with the public schools that provide additional guidance to enhance the plan that was originally shared with us over the summer, and this information is taken from Addendum 9, which is very specific to contact tracing in schools. So on the left, you'll see all of the potential scenarios, going from one positive confirmed case to the spectrum of what might be deemed as community outbreak. And again, what we consider are all the mitigation factors that have been in play. So the things that we've been talking about for weeks now, mask-wearing, social distancing, six feet or greater, hand hygiene, what have the cleaning and disinfecting protocols looked like, and has there been interaction between parties that we would then help the Farmington Valley Health District determine those close contacts? And depending on those scenarios, we certainly can exclude those close contacts. We might determine based upon those scenarios that we might have to send a certain group of students or staff members home to quarantine for a certain amount of time until the time period, which is 10 days, which is two weeks of school, or 14 days, which includes weekend, has lapsed. And during that time, what will happen is the Farmington Valley Health District will personally reach out to those that are deemed close contacts to the person that is positive, and they will continuously follow up. They truly do this, and they will call, they will check on symptoms. Are you still asymptomatic? And if there is any additional kind of nuances to these cases, they are extremely communicative back to us so that we can make good decisions. So again, the purpose of this slide is just to share with you that there are multiple contexts that could come into play as we make decisions around possible exclusions, and those exclusions are either quarantines or isolations. Now, there have been instances where there's been a person who's been in close contact with a close contact, and what I want to point out is that that is another degree of separation from the positive case. So some might be concerned that they might have had interaction with a close contact a week ago, for instance. That wouldn't necessarily come into play. We're not going to isolate close contacts of close contacts. The purpose is to isolate those who have had direct contact with someone that has been proven to be positive for COVID. So again, a lot of context, a lot of different scenarios, but I will assure you that the Farmington Valley Health District is with us every step of this, conferring and collaborating, and I have a little bit more to share with you about that collaboration, but just want to stop and pause to see if there's any questions. Brian?
I don't know if this is the right time to ask it, but my question is, as the weather's getting colder now, and there are other sicknesses that are coming out, if somebody goes to school and they leave and come home and are not feeling well, or are sent home by the nurse with a stomach bug or something, what's the protocol for them to get back into school? Do they have to take a COVID test? Do they have to quarantine for 14 days? And it's, and they're not COVID positive, but maybe they went home with some other ailment or nerves or whatever. I've heard a lot of discussion about this, and my fear is that people will, if, you know, where I'm going, if somebody elects to go to school or to not go home if they're not feeling well because they don't want to have to then quarantine for 14 days, that type of thing, they may not report the fact that they're not feeling well. Do we have an official protocol to get back to school, and what is that?
We do, Brian, and I can go over that with you. And that guidance is actually evolving. The reason why it's evolving is they, health officials are now making a delineation between symptomology, and even specifically, and we're going to be sharing this information with our school nurses, updating some of the parent health checks to exactly your point, because we want people to be able to self-assess and report and not feel like they're going to be penalized if they do so. So to your specific question, there are certain symptoms called Level 1 symptoms. They include an onset of fever. They might include chills. They might include that sudden loss of taste or smell, and there are a couple of others. I don't have them directly in front of me, so I'm learning more and more about these markers than I ever thought I imagined that I would learn. And those, again, are called Level 1 symptoms. If a student is experiencing those or a staff member is experiencing those, they are asked to stay home. They will be encouraged, not mandated, but encouraged to go for a COVID test. In addition, with those symptoms, they are asked to reach out to their doctor, especially if they are not decreasing over time. That doctor can do a couple of things. They can also encourage a COVID test, and we would await results of those tests, or they can determine that there's history, allergy season is upon us, so there's a lot of symptoms that are conducive to allergies too, and a doctor may say, "I'm providing an alternative diagnosis. This is not COVID, and therefore the staff member or the student can return to school." So that's always in play, whether or not there is a COVID test. Now, there's also things called secondary symptoms. Those are things like vomiting, sore throat, runny nose. Those, students again and staff are also encouraged to stay home. We can't emphasize that enough. If you're sick, please stay home. With those Level 2 symptoms, students and staff will be able to return without a doctor's note 24 hours after those symptoms are gone, without any kind of medicine or any other medical intervention, holistic or otherwise, that are, that is getting in the way from that, those symptoms decreasing. So that's 24 hours after those symptoms are gone. Again, those are for Level 2 symptoms. So the Farmington Valley Health District has recently developed, elaborated on these protocols to account for those different types of symptoms, and they have updated both their document for school nurses, and this is just is happening this week, as well as the parent check. So we are going to be placing that parent check as a reminder for staff and for families on our website that families can access. If they are some of those Level 2 symptoms, please, families are still encouraged to call the school nurse, so the school nurse can walk families through that process and make the determination whether they're exhibiting those primary symptoms or those secondary symptoms. I hope that answers your question.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone else?
So we can't underscore enough the collaboration, responsiveness, and the willingness for the Farmington Valley Health District to engage with us as we work to determine what are the best protocols in which to utilize. So even before last week, we were proactively collaborating with the Farmington Health District. They were giving us information for which they are experts on, and then we were taking that and saying, "Okay, this is how it realistically lives in schools, and who do we have to communicate with, when, and for what purpose?" So we have an agreement that if one of us receives any type of information, the first thing that we do is call, and the responsive time, response time has been excellent, to just get the ball rolling on what we might need to do. So we work together to confirm any contact tracing information, as I just explained in our previous slide, and then we make the determination collaboratively. Again, is there need for any exclusions from the school community? If so, what are those? And then how do we make those determinations? So it really is a true collaborative partnership. As Matt mentioned, we are on calls with the Farmington Valley Health District staff and area superintendents every single week. We can talk about scenarios, both proactive and reactive, as we refine our practices here in Simsbury. Any questions about that?
I'm going to regress for a second due to the slide prior. When, when I used to call the kids, and there was an absence line. Have we taken out the automated absence line, and are you speaking directly to the nurse now, or are you leaving a message and people calling you back? How is that working?
Great question, Susan. So you still call into the absence line? We ask that you be detailed, as detailed as you can be. Those messages are all listened to, and then there are follow-up calls if necessary. Certainly, if you find that there is a situation that needs more immediate attention, then you would just contact the main office, and they can get you in touch with the nurse, or you can follow the extensions on that voice line.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there's an avenue for everybody to reach who they need to.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
So if there are no other questions, in the spirit of collaboration, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Erin Murray, to discuss more about the distance learning for the secondary schools.
Great, thank you.
So this gives me the opportunity to bring us back to talking about teaching and learning, which certainly is at the heart of the work that I oversee across the district. As Matt had said, Betsy Gonzalez, our Director of Alumni Curriculum, was able to talk with you in a little bit more detail at the last meeting regarding our K-6 program, which is a program, a separated program of itself, which is very different from our 712. Our 712 program, parents, families that have opted to choose to have their children stay home, participate, those students are logging in daily to their classroom following their daily schedule. So when I think about the work that we've been doing since last spring, over the summertime and into the fall, is that we knew there were three different models that we would be looking at. Obviously, fully in-person, hybrid model, and fully-distanced model, as well as the opt-in model. What I have been doing and having conversations with administrators and with teachers and vertical teams that I'm working with is that we are highly committed to providing a very engaging instruction opportunity for all of our students. We want it to be as rigorous and dynamic and relevant to our students as possible, whether we're in one of these three models as we go forward. So we can go to the next one. As, as Neil said, we have 100 students at Henry James, 46th and 7th grade, and 54th and 8th grade. These are the students that are at home and through their, their periods, on the odd days or the even days, they're logging in and participating. And the, the reason that we looked at it and went in this direction is that those are the content expert teachers that we want to be able to provide that rigorous, engaging instruction to our students. At the second, at the high school, you can see it's a very different, it ranges from 35 to 54 students, but for a total of 185 students that are, have chosen to opt in to distance learning at Simsbury High School. And again, it's a little bit more complex because we author, we offer a plethora of electives. So our students are taking, obviously, their English, math, science, social studies, world language, but there's so many other opportunities, and in order to continue to provide those, they're logging into those classes as well.
Erin?
Yes.
Do we have more people opt for full homeschooling?
We do. I don't have the exact numbers right in front of me, as Todd's asking for homeschooling. We have almost doubled the amount of students that have chosen, parents that have chosen to, families to continue to homeschool, which, when, when families choose that, they're disenrolling their students from the Simsbury Public Schools, following a curriculum that they're providing. Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. I can get those numbers for you and provide those.
I was just interested if that, if, if that went up or if more people said, well, I can be home and distance learn if, if, if it went up or down. I was just curious about that.
It did go.
I don't need the numbers. Thank you.
And so, and so Erin, it's a total of 285 students at this point. And so at this point, it could be these 285 students would continue distance learning for the full year.
That is at the parent, the family's choice as they go through, the expectation, as when you look at the documents, when you see from the state, they talk about it as a temporary decision opt-in. So there are times when families are in a distance learning and they say, I'm ready for my child to go back to school. We've had that. We've also had families that have had students in school that say, not ready for this, I want to distance learn. So we've had a bit of a cross method of, of that at, at this point.
Right.
So we have about 405 at the elementary level, K-6, and the 285 in the secondary.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
I'll come back to this later, but I'm just wanting that checked right now.
All right. So as we move forward and talk a little bit more about the distance learning, it's, it's a complicated model that we have at the secondary level right now because we have the hybrid model where we have cohort A in, cohort B at home, and distance learners. So we've asked a lot of our teachers to really find ways to connect with those students. And we've had glitches and frustrations and some successes, obviously, along the way. But we've talked a lot about it and we're looking at ways to continue to improve the connections, the relationships, and the ways in which we can provide a highly robust, rigorous learning opportunity for all students. I'm going to switch over to the technology issues. We made a huge change in the use of technology in the last six months. It's caused significant learning for a lot of our teachers. And the point is, obviously, is to be able to reach all kids every day for the periods that we need to do it. So that's caused us some significant interruptions along the way. The first week, the first 10 days, the significant drop-offs that we had with Google, and it wasn't just happening in Simsbury, but we had our fair share. And it was extremely frustrating for our teachers, for our administrators, and obviously for our students as they went through this. So we have engaged our technicians, Jason Casey, John C. Alitwinnick, in really working as diligently and as hard as we can to address these issues as best we can. We want to make sure that we continue to provide our teachers ongoing professional learning opportunities. We learn something new almost every day. And there are ways that it comes maybe a little bit more easy to some and a little bit more difficult. And Google, as you may know, is also coming out with new features to their product as time is going on. So also trying to learn all of that. But through this technology frustration and these glitches that we've had, we've made some significant decisions. Webcams and microphones have been installed here at the high school and at Henry James to provide teachers more accessibility and sound in their classrooms. We are in the process, they are supposed to arrive Thursday. We have bought about 100 computer towers, the PC towers, to replace our old towers. When we virtualized a number, a dozen years ago, the, they had a processing speed that is much lower than what is needed right now. And what we found is that when the technology was in use, the processing speed, what was kick, was, what was kicking us off and causing us the most difficulty.
For the video.
For the video. And so those are supposed to arrive Thursday. We have technicians that will be working on it Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Monday is a Jewish holiday. We don't have school. They should be up and running. We're hoping for a good transfer and transition to those towers here at Simsbury High School on Tuesday morning, the 27th. We are in the midst of doing a full inventory of all of our devices to try to get an overall view of what we have, what is continued to be loaned out. And what we're looking at is we have like three different types of Chromebooks. We have our HPs, our CLTs, Lenovo's. And what we know is the CLTs, they struggle. We, we noticed it and when we were using those Chromebooks early on as well.
Remember our initial Zoom meetings? That's what I was on and you could never hear me.
Yes. So those are aging out. So we're trying to get that full inventory in order to make a better assessment at what we will need in order to do that. But the overall, you know, as we think about distance learning and we think about the adjustments that we need to make, we want to ensure, as we went back to that first slide, that we are providing equitable opportunities for all kids as we move forward. We want to make sure that we continue to build those relationships. We want classroom environments that are inclusive, whether you're sitting in the classroom or you're sitting at home. We want to ensure that that's happening. That's why I think that Monday, as we talk about the, the potential, the thinking that we're doing right now about using that Monday as a distance learning day, it really does provide us that opportunity for teacher collaboration, A period check-in, and the afternoon from 12:30 to 2:30 really will give us time that teachers can connect with our distance learning students. So that's a critical time. We also want to make sure that through this learning, these are up to 80-minute periods, that we have a balance between the synchronous and the asynchronous learning. An 80-minute period of being on the computer is a long time. So teachers are really finding new structures and systems and ways in which to engage kids in the learning. And again, features that are coming out with Google are going to continue to help us engage kids in small group work and collaboration amongst themselves. And so we're working hard at bringing that forward. We want to make sure that that block of time is made available. And what I also am talking with folks about is that it's, the academic piece, the work that we do is so critically important as we prepare our students in Simsbury for life beyond Simsbury High School. But we also have to pay attention to that social emotional aspect of it as well. So by doing and having time within the day for our teachers to not only work with the students that are in front of them, but with the distance learners is a critical aspect of the work that we're doing. And then also finding ways in which to connect our students with our school counselors, with other school personnel, whether it's school psychologists, other folks within the district, to ensure that we're providing and creating relationships with students. So with all of that, I guess I want to say the bottom line is that we're ensuring that our 712 students in school and distance learners, no matter what that learning model is, have access to that high-quality, high-impact learning opportunities as we move forward. And those are the kinds of conversations as we're planning for this re-entry for students, that we're keeping that at the forefront of our conversations.
All right. While we have the luxury of two students here, I'm going to put Catherine and Shannon on the spot just a little bit and ask you to tell us kind of how your experience has been.
Can they come to the mic?
Can, can you, do you guys mind going to the microphone? That way the TV, the stream for SCTV will pick you up as well as all the rest of us. Thanks.
Okay.
Distance.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Well, I was saying, in my experience so far, there definitely have been some technical difficulties. And as I think it was Mr. Hunter was saying before, it is a lot harder to stay engaged in school. And I consider myself a very like dedicated student. I like want to learn. I'm like, I'm on all my meets, but I know that my, like, and even for me, it's kind of hard to stay engaged sometimes, just like sitting there for 80 minutes, like not in an actual class or anything. And I know a lot of my friends feel the same way, especially those who aren't as like dedicated. They're just like really struggling to receive like a good, proper education in this time. So, yeah.
Thank you.
But all the teachers are doing really well, too. I don't want to say it's all bad because the teachers are putting in a lot of effort, too. And working really hard.
Working very hard. Thank you.
Appreciate the clarification.
Um, I agree with Shannon. I think that all of the like COVID protocols that have been like set into play, like walking on the right side of the hallway, like wearing masks, no one's like taking them off. I would say like everyone's following the directions, which like in the beginning, I didn't think that would happen, but it's actually going really well. So, yeah.
Great.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you very much.
All right. Anybody else have questions for Erin?
I actually have one question. Was, is there a chance, now I, because I know in the beginning, it's going to, you know, be, it was super hard. I, I've heard so many technology issues, but it seems like things are starting to get better and things are going to, and as that process improves, is there opportunity for those full-time distance learners to go to the teacher or give feedback, like, you know, this process isn't working, or this didn't work? Or is there some type of survey or anything? Like, how do those kids? No, I just don't, I just feel like elementary kids are quick to say, I can't hear you, I don't know what's going on. But high school kids, even though they have the capacity to say it, they kind of just sit there. And so I didn't know if there was a forum to give that feedback.
And I do think that's why those Monday afternoons will be a critical time in which to be able to do that, as well as connecting them with their school counselors and/or other folks, to really be able to talk about what's working, what's not working. And maybe there will be a survey at some point. That's something I've heard other people, I'm in my assistant superintendent group across the greater Hartford area, we're, we're talking about those kinds of things as we're three or four weeks into school. What is it that we want to know from kids? And we don't want to exclude that. So that is a possibility.
So, I mean, Neil knows, because I called Neil early in the week around the technology issues. So for the folks that are at home who are listening or who watch this on playback, hopefully the technology issues will go away, based on what Erin has just laid out. So come September 29th, October 1st, the hope is that there should be no more technology issues. And if there are, the hope is that someone is keeping a list.
Yes.
Right, Erin?
Yes.
And that people should be calling in. And that was the conversation that I think I had with Neil, is that people should be calling the issues in to someone so that Jason or someone else can, you know, be addressing them.
So we do have, we do have a help desk. We do have the, the ways in which teachers can connect. If there's particular devices that are not working for them, absolutely, we'll continue doing that. And over time, you'll see more information coming forward, even as we move into a new budget, as to what do we need in order to replace the old, in order to get, because it really does come down to processing speed.
Yep.
That's really been the one thing that we've seen as, as the piece that keeps cutting us off. The other piece that, you know, we know, and our teachers, and I love what the kids say, is they're working really hard at it, but there are user issues as well.
Oh, yeah.
We're all trying to learn how to use it in a way that's most effective.
Yeah.
And balance that live time and other time that could be students working collaboratively together, so that it's not an 80-minute, oh my gosh, I'm on here for 80 minutes. How can we engage kids in a way that's going to keep them actively learning? It's about the depth of knowledge that they're gaining as they're in these classes.
Yeah, but when you've got, you know, IT parents trying to figure out stuff and it's still not working, you know, then it's, it's got to be the machine, right?
Then we have that help desk, that they should be reaching out as well.
Yeah.
I would just want to add one positive, though, is that I think teachers are, are obviously talking to each other because it seems like there's a cheat sheet, sort of say, that people can now know, like my, one of my daughters is on a, a class that has a, a large number of people. And so, you know, learning how to like shut down one thing and then work on another, they've been able to work it around. And so from, at least from my students' experience, point of view, it is better because they can hear stuff or they can see stuff. It's not just dropping and they can't, you know, they're panicking trying to get back on, so.
No, I would, I would say, yeah, John C., Jason, and the team, and then the teachers have done, you know, remarkable things with identifying some workarounds, posting them so all teachers can have them, and trying to push them out as quick as they can. So, thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
Thank you. I think it's important to note, too, with the computers, when we went to the virtual network, we never dreamed that we would have all these demands on the processing speeds.
Correct.
So we're playing a little catch-up workaround because we made just financial decisions to go with a network that suited our needs at the time, and no one could have foreseen the drag we were going to have on the network to do all we're asking it to do. Speaking of financial needs.
Time for some numbers.
Amy.
I love my numbers. All right. So the first item in your packet is just the year-end.
Amy, I think you need to take the mic closer.
Better? Okay. The first item in your packet is the year-end operating results for the end of fiscal year 20. So this is the chart that you're, you're used to seeing on a quarterly basis. I'm going to focus just on a couple of items because as you can imagine, the majority of the variances in the line items are related to COVID. So each of the line items have a corresponding, small little narrative related to them. And as you, as you've probably read through, the majority are COVID because of the early, the early closing of the school, or additional PPE supplies, things of that nature. So all the way at the bottom, you'll see the total general fund balance. We ended in a surplus of about $266,000. We did review this with the Board of Finance at their last meeting and requested we be able to keep those savings in our non-lapsing fund, since we know that we're going to have a lot of COVID expenses for the current year. They did approve that request, so we are, have increased our non-lapsing fund by that Going through some of the other items that are of note that are not COVID-related, you'll see in the general control that there was a budget deficit in this group of about $43,000. There were three staff retirements, and then their replacements overlapped their leaving. So there was additional expense there. And then, as you all know, the school business manager is out on leave, and there were individuals that took on his tasks, so there was additional expenditures there. On the instruction side of things, there was some budgetary savings. We had actually a staffing transition at the high school related to the principal position. And then there was a vacancy related to this transition, so we had about $100,000 in savings in that line item. Moving down to food services, I'm going to mention this one, and you'll obviously see why later in your packet, but this is the only one related to COVID that I'm going to point out, is that there was a budget deficit in this line item of about $100,000. And this was a transfer that was done from our general fund into our food services fund, which I'll explain in a minute. And then the last item I just wanted to touch on because it had a significant budget deficit is the $371,000 for the added district. So we had some special ed students during the year that we increased our number of special ed students. And then those special ed students also had higher value services. We do get reimbursed a portion of these services from the state via the excess cost grant, but we have to spend four and a half times our per pupil expenditure to get any sort of reimbursement. So right now, we're at about $17,000, so we need to spend almost $80,000 before they'll reimburse anything. And that's per student. So as you can see, it definitely had an impact on our budget for this year. For fiscal year 21. Oh, go ahead.
Sue, example, higher value service.
Example what?
Example of higher value.
For an outplaced student, what's a higher value service?
For, I would just say tuition for a student that we do place out of the district. There are the tuition costs of that outplacement, and when we outplace a student, that's because for whatever reason, their needs have a level of intensity that we're not able to service at this time. So it's higher tuition for those placements. It could be a combination of that and also transportation. It could be accommodation of that, and also transportation costs to get the student to be outplacement. Those are two more popular reasons for those higher costs.
So transportation could be one of the things, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
So for fiscal year '21, right now, there are no budgetary concerns related to this. However, as the school year progresses, we're definitely going to keep a, keep a close eye on our special education out-of-district tuition, since this is something that did peak out last year. So we'll keep you apprised of that if anything comes of it and any budgetary concerns come forward as the year progresses. Any questions on the overall year-end report before I move on? Okay. So the next item in your packet is the food services fund. So if you skip over the narrative and you go to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, so this is a basic profit and loss statement, if you will, where it has all of your revenues, and then it has all of your actual dollar values from fiscal year '16 all the way to fiscal year '20. So it starts with your revenues, then you move down to your expenditures, you have your operating transfers, which I'll touch on, you have your net change in fund balance, which is basically your profit or loss for that fund, then you have your beginning fund balance, your ending fund balance, and then below that, I broke out what the fund balance is. So the fund balance reserved for inventory, this is how much money we have on hand in inventory. So this isn't physical cash, it's all of the food sitting in the cupboards in the freezer at the schools. So if we were to liquidate it, that would be the value of it. The unrestricted fund balance is your cash. So this is the cash that we have to work with through the year to pay our bills. So as you can see, from fiscal year '16 to fiscal year '19, we had some good years and some bad years. We had some, you know, modest deficits, but then the next year, we'd have a modest increase. And the fund balance was pretty much holding steady around $140,000, $150,000, no real concerns. Now, if you get to fiscal year '20, well, we had COVID. And during COVID, when all of the students left, the USDA required that we continue the food program at no charge to any of the Simsbury families. So we still had the costs incurred of the food and the program, and as you can see, we had a huge, a significant loss in the amount of revenue. We did have some savings and expenditures, but not enough to offset the loss in the revenue that we received. So now, if you go to that transfers in, on the operating transfers line, that $100,000, so that's what I just mentioned in the general fund report for year-end, that transfer from the general fund into the food services fund. And then you can see that the net change in fund balance, or your loss for fiscal year '20, was about $80,000. Now, if we had not transferred that $100,000 into the fund, that loss would have been $180,000. If we had $180,000 loss, that makes our fund balance go down to about $5,000. Well, if $45,000 of it is our inventory, that means we have a negative fund balance of $50,000. So our fund is no longer solvent. We cannot pay our bills with what we're making without being infused or alone a transfer from the general fund. So had we not done that transfer, we would have had no cash. So why this is important is because we need to find a way to build our fund balance back up. And our preliminary data for fiscal year '21 is not, is not ideal. So typically, around September, last year's data, we had about 16,000 meals that we served in September at this time. This year, in September of '20, we're at 2,500 meals. So that's a loss of about 13,000 meals. So seeing that decrease, you can pretty much assume that we're going to see another deficit in this fund. So of that $180,000 deficit, $150,000 of it was related to COVID. The other $30,000 is related to a minimum wage increase. And that increase is not done going up. So they have it going up in increments, starting, I believe, was it like $12 an hour, going all the way up to $15 an hour? And we haven't taken all of that increase yet. So those expenditures are going to continue to rise over the next couple of years or so as we implement those minimum wage increases. Let's see. So most recently, as the students are returning to the classroom full-time, the meal counts have started to come up. But as you can see, a $13,000, I mean, a $13,000 meal count difference is still, you know, it's, it's far off from where we are, and still likely, we're going to have a loss. The director is looking into some potential ways to change up the menu that might help. And then we're also going to continue to monitor to see where we stand at the end of November, when all of the, the schools are back in session, menu changes have been made, and then get a real feel for where our, where our data stands, and then where our numbers stand. So, you know, we're going to have a loss this year, but if things start to return to normal, are we going to go back on track with getting, you know, a modest surplus some years, a modest deficit other years? So this is something that we actually need to focus on during our budget season, not just for fiscal year '20, but going forward as well, because we really need to see not, unrelated to COVID, what the minimum wage impact is going to do. And is there a way to build up that fund balance back to where it needs to be? So that's kind of where we stand right now. We're going to bring it to the Board of Finance at their next meeting, just to give them a heads up, if at year-end, we do need an additional transfer from either our non-lapsing fund or possibly the general fund, to make sure that we have enough, enough cash flow to keep going and start working out some of the kinks in the fund. Any questions?
Yeah, Amy, can you just repeat, can you repeat again the number of meals from last September to this September?
Yep. So last September, it was 16,224, and this September, it's 2,569.
Okay. Just a quick question. Do we have to offer meals at the school? Yeah? Karen, can we just say everyone bring their lunch? I mean, could?
You mean now?
My team responded to that.
No, we, yeah.
So Brian, we do, we do it for his people to bring their lunch, and I think that that attributes to some of the responses that we've seen and the decrease in meals. We must provide meals because there are students who rely on those meals for, at a free and reduced lunch rate as well. So we are obligated to provide both breakfast and lunch to all so that students might have access to that.
Okay.
Amy, why, why are the 2020 revenues categorized differently than all the previous years?
I think the business office just started breaking them out so they could see individual line items clear instead of combining them together.
Okay, so that's not?
It's not new.
Okay.
No. So like the daily sales you'll see in '19 has 600,000, but that 600,000 in '20 is probably the daily, the daily sales, the breakfast sales, and then the advanced meal pay.
Okay.
So by the advanced meal pay, we're talking about when the parents put money on the kid's lunch account?
You got it.
Right.
So if there's no more questions, we'll keep you posted on that as we move on through the year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The final item is just your regular COVID expenditure update. So since the last time we met, we closed out fiscal year '20, so those numbers are final. For fiscal year '21, the expenditures increased about $100,000 from the last time that we met. So if you recall, during this time, I did expect one, one additional larger expenditure flow into, into these expenditures, and that did happen. Now, we're starting to, things kind of taper off as technology gets in place. Some of the kinks have been worked out. I haven't seen as many expenditures come through. So I think at this point, we'll probably be minimal expenditures, just maintenance for probably some PPE, cleaning supplies, things of that nature. I don't expect any more large increases.
What about all the stuff that Erin just bought?
It's already in there.
That's in here.
It's accounted for.
Just put it right in Erin's bag.
So on the personnel, I know there was some confusion around this last time. This number represents the five teachers, but just to reiterate what Matt said at the last meeting, in October, they do do a FTE analysis of all the employees. Some have left, some have come on board. If there are any employees where the net is above and beyond budget, that number will be added to the additional five teachers that we know are already above and beyond budget.
That number will go up. It will, it will go up.
And that number will go up.
Yeah.
So at the end of fiscal year '21, right now, we have about $922,000 in COVID expenses. Just to let you know overall where we are, we have the $266,000 in fiscal year '20 savings that I mentioned. We had our first round of state CARES money for $83,000. We had a second round of CARES money for about $292,000. We had some capital money left over from a, a previous project of $60,000. So this is about $700,000 that we have available in the current year to pay for that $900,000 in COVID expenditures. So this leaves us at about a deficit of $221,000. So we will be utilizing the non-lapsing fund to fund that remaining $220,000. The non-lapsing is currently sitting at $385,000, not including the fiscal year '20 savings. So as of right now, we have a non-lapsing balance of about $163,000. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Amy. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So now, review of the face mask policy, Mr. Sullivan.
All right, last agenda item tonight, I'll try to move through it quickly. As I indicated at the last board meeting, the guidance about what had been described as a face mask policy changed from the notion of sort of an administrative guideline that a school would put out to the last, one of the addendums to the state plan that indicated it needed to be a board-approved policy. So as soon as that came out, the people who assist with policies in the state, there are two entities, CAE Rights Policies and Shipman &amp; Goodwin, our law firm, Rights Policies as well to guide boards. I looked at the two of them, felt that the Shipman &amp; Goodwin policy was a, was a better direction for us. And what you have in front of you is, you know, 99% of the Shipman &amp; Goodwin draft policy. You'll see from the exhibit that it will need to sit in two places. It's the same exact policy, but it needs to sit in the personnel series because it's a requirement of face covering for employees, so that's the 4,000 series. And then the 5,000 series of policies is our student policies. So in terms of what to note about this, it is, I don't, I think it's not controversial in any way, and that it, what you've seen in the news about face coverings, it covers it very well. The decision that we made administratively of what to put forward, we eliminated specifically the notion of bandanas as an acceptable covering, based on the news about that particular covering, and the valve mask that was talked a lot about in the news, and said that that was not an acceptable way to cover. We did allow for the gator, which also has gotten some conversation, which is the garb around the neck that you pull up over the nose. It's a, it's a covering that is pretty popular with teenagers and, you know, especially the boys who like to wear the gator. And as we did our research into it, we found it to be an acceptable mask or covering, and decided to allow it in our recommendation. The rest of what you will see in the administrative regulations has a lot to do with now the kind of medical forms that you would fill out. We have very few students who cited a medical exemption to wearing a mask, really profoundly disabled students for the most part, or with documented respiratory problems who, you know, medically are not contraindicated to wear a mask. You know, out of 4,000 students, about half a dozen. And what the, the regulations come forward with are forms, we already have medical documentation of these students, but we'll go through these now recommended forms with those families and have the proper sign-offs after this policy passes. So we are on, on kind of an emergency passing of this policy through the bylaws. Normally, it takes first and second reading. We're bypassing that. The Policy Committee did review this last week, so thank you to Sharon, and Lydia, and Jen, and Todd for getting back to me. Those four folks have already reviewed it. We decided to see if there were any questions in the next two weeks from anybody else. So it's being presented to you tonight, and we'll vote on it on October 13th. Any questions for now about it?
No? Thank you. All right. With that.
Can, um, did, can I just ask a question?
Please.
Um, did those, did you guys present, prepare anything to present tonight?
No, we talked.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
While I skipped some things, I did know that. I was like, oh, I do apologize.
If they did, if they did their work, I'd be like, oh, we can't ignore them.
I know, I know. My new setting has thrown me off, so I do apologize, and I'll get it down.
It's like, there's a lot going on, actually. Susan, can you repeat what, Tara, can you repeat what you just said?
Tara asked if the, if the student reps had a, anything that they wanted to tell us tonight that I may have skipped because I went out of order.
Okay.
So, but we're good.
Good. All right. Okay. So with that, any other public audience? Seeing none. Our next meeting will be October 13th, 2020. Are we in the Board of Ed conference room?
We can discuss that. Yep, most likely, yes.
Okay. And you can always watch us live on SCTV or recorded. And I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Nice.
All right. Thank you all very much.